Good morning and welcome to the Tri-City Council. We'll call this meeting to order on Wednesday, April 30th, 2025 at 10:30 a.m. This morning, we're in the City of Kingman in the city council chambers for the City of Kingman. Thank you so much for hosting us. If you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Ms. Meredith, if you want to call the roll, please.
Do you want me to like go through or do you want to just have everybody just introduce themselves? And I can let you know who's online?
Yeah, let's start maybe with the dais and then we'll go through the whole group to have a microphone. Thank you so much. All right. So I'm Mayor Cal Sheehy from Lake Havasu City.
I'm Mayor DiAmico from Bullhead City.
Mayor Ken Watkins from Kingman.
Tina Moline, Deputy City Manager, Finance Director for City of Kingman.
Jess Coniston, City Manager for Lake Havasu City.
Travis Pruitt, Assistant City Manager, Bullhead City, City Executive, Toby Powert.
Mayor Howard Green, Town of Colorado City.
Online, we have joining us Tom Belshi from the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, Sarah Legowski from Lake Havasu MPO, Melissa Palmer from Mojave County Department of Public Health, Karen Dahlman, and Shannon Davis from Lake Havasu City, and Renee Julian from the League of Arizona Cities and Towns.
My name's Tanya Ferguson. I'm the Deputy City Clerk for the City of Kingman.
Hi, I'm Jamie Staley, Kingman City Council.
Mary Ann Salem, representing BOS District One, Travis Lingandfelter.
Mojave County Treasurer, Sue Adamello.
White Stevens, Chief Deputy Treasurer from Mojave County.
Sean Savage, City Kingman Council.
Jason Newlin, Bullhead City Council.
Dan Alfonso, Vice Mayor, Bullhead City, and this is my wife, Linda.
Smiley Ward, Kingman City Council.
Don Martin, District Four Supervisor.
Good morning, Sam Elters, County Manager for Mojave County.
I'm Mary Ann Daminski. I'm with the Arizona Attorney General's Office Community Engagement Team. I'm just here to make an announcement.
Sarah Hall, Communications and Marketing with the City of Kingman.
Linda Owens, Administrative Assistant to Supervisor Don Martin.
Todd Steberger, Assistant District Engineer, ADOT.
Good morning, Michelle Beggs, ADOT Community Relations.
Good morning, Kelly Williams, City Clerk, Lake Havasu City.
Good morning, I'm Ally Blum, Senior Executive Assistant for Lake Havasu City.
Anthony Kizlowski, Assistant City Manager, Lake Havasu City.
Hello, Cameron Moses, Lake Havasu City Council.
Jenny Koch, Lake Havasu City Council.
And I'm Annie Meredith, City Clerk for the City of Kingman.
Excellent. Well, welcome. Thank you all for joining us both in person and virtually. We appreciate you engaging with us in the Tri-City Council. We will now have a call to the public, which Mary Ann Daminski from the Arizona Attorney General's Community Engagement Office has an announcement. I believe the microphone is on, but.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, again, I'm Mary Ann Daminski. I'm with the Arizona Attorney General's Office, the fun part of the Attorney General's Office, Community Engagement. I just wanted to come out and introduce myself to everyone from the cities represented here in the county. Just to let you all know that I would love to be a part of any community outreach activities or events that you all are planning or that you know of. I have been assigned to Mojave County as well as a couple of other northern counties. So I hope to get out to each of your cities at least once in the next couple of months. I also wanted to offer my assistance if you have any trouble navigating the Attorney General's Office departments or services. I would be happy to be a contact person for you and to help get your message up the chain of command at the AGO. So I will follow up with an email to everyone I can identify here, probably early next week, just so you all have my contact information. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you for being here. Would anyone else like to address the Tri-City Council during Call to the Public? Seeing now, we'll close the Call to the Public. Item four is the approval of the minutes from the January 15th, 2025 Tri-City Council Meeting.
I'll make that motion. One second.
We have a motion from Mayor Watkins. We have a second from Mayor DiAmico. Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item five is updates from the Mojave County Board of Supervisors and other elected officials. Supervisor Martin, did you want to say a few words?
I'm here to learn.
All right. Supervisor Martin, for those virtually, he's here to learn. Thank you so much Supervisor for being here.
Mayor Sheehy.
Yes.
I just want to let you know that we've had a couple additional people join us online. We have got Kevin Adam from RTAC, Judy Soltrip, who is representing Senator Kelly's office, and also Karen Dahlman.
Thank you. Treasurer Sue Adamello, did you have anything you would like to say?
I'd like to just.
Could we get you on a microphone, please?
Oh, gosh, I'll come up there.
Yes.
I don't think I've ever been on this side. I just wanted to update you on our tax deed cell. We wrapped it up. We brought 829 parcels. We sold all but five, and that brought $2.4 million into the county's coffers. So those five will be available over the counter at the Clerk of the Board's office. And we're just, it was another successful year.
Very nice. Yeah, congratulations. Thank you so much for the update. Then Ms. Salem, did you have an update from Supervisor Lingandfelter's office?
Yes.
If you could also make your way to the, to a microphone. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor did have a meeting this morning, Supervisor Lingandfelter, regarding the Walupi Valley Basin, and there is some good news, I believe. And he will be wanting to meet with the City of Kingman and give you updates. The Walupi Valley Basin being designated as an INA in 2022 has had positive outcome, and he wants to discuss that. He also looks forward to having another quarterly meeting with some of the City Council, Kingman meeting we had with Mayor Watkins and a few other people. And we look forward to doing that quarterly, just to discuss future concerns or collaborate work together to help make things better for Kingman and Mojave County in general. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. We'll move on to item six, which is our legislative update, the League of Arizona Cities and Towns. Mr. Belshi, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. We always appreciate the opportunity to address the Tri-City Council. Just some general things that I want to share with the Tri-City Council before I turn it over to Renee to do the specific legislative update. We are right now in the midst of a policy committee setup. And so any of you that have interest in joining us at the various five policy committees need to let us know so that we can provide you with the information when those dates are set and the agendas are set, so that you can participate in the development of our legislative agenda. And we also just want to, again, as always, as we get, you know, near the end of session and get closer to summer, you're going to start getting more information about the League Conference. And we're looking forward to Scottsdale at the Princess this year, and already making plans for that. So we hope that you all will be joining us there. And with that, Renee, I want you to take it over and give the specifics about what's going on right now at the legislature.
All right. Thank you, Tom, and thank you, mayors. Just a couple notes on some of the items that Tom hit on. Remember, or just a reminder, that just because you were on a previous committee does not mean you're automatically reappointed to the policy committee. So everybody has to resubmit every year. I know we're getting a lot of those. And then also, this is a mental note I had to make for myself, which is our annual conference, I believe is a week earlier this year, right, Tom? Normally, we go right into Labor Day weekend, but now we're a week ahead of that. Is that right, Tom? So, you know, anyone planning vacation plans, something useful to be aware of. So in terms of the legislature, so we are well past 100 days. It's been a while since we've ever been able to end session in 100 days. The, it's a lot of hurry up and wait these days. The big holdup last week really was an impasse regarding developmental disability funding. So at the State Department of Economic Security, there's a program where parents or, I guess, I don't know the right term, those who have legal guardianship over minors who require, or adults who require a certain level of care due to a developmental disability, they can get trained and then paid by the state to provide that care directly to their dependents rather than having to rely on, you know, service providers. That program is, was scheduled to run out of funding today. And the Republicans had put forward a proposal to fund that program through the fiscal year or through the remainder of the fiscal year. However, it pulled from a number of other funding sources to do so, a number of which, or essentially all of them, had some level of opposition from the Democratic Party. It should be noted, one of those sources they pulled from would have been the Housing Trust Fund, which did raise concerns amongst local governments and the, you know, sort of affordable housing, pro-housing community, because the Housing Trust Fund arguably is insufficient to meet our housing needs in the state. The governor, in response to that proposal, instituted a bill moratorium saying that she would veto every bill that came to her desk unless she received a bipartisan solution to the DDD funding issue. So that's Division of Developmental Disability, when you hear people talk about DDD. Thankfully, that issue was resolved. And a bipartisan solution was found. So that did kind of slow down floor action for about a week. And now with that issue being resolved, you have two kind of, two items that moved. One, just your regular legislation, because the bill moratorium is over. But many people expect now that the existing budget shortfalls have been addressed, in theory, this should open the door for budget negotiations for the upcoming fiscal year. We haven't heard any concrete intel on how those conversations are going or how, you know, or any sticking points at this point. But that is where everyone expects the attention to be focused on now. Now regarding the budget, the bad news is, it's all bad news. Let me pull up my notes here. So at the beginning of the year, the calendar year, JLBC, that's the Legislature's budget arm, predicted that by FY27, the legislature would have about $615 million in surplus to, for lack of a better term, play with. In April or mid-April, they had a new Finance Advisory Committee meeting, and they had to do a special forecast. So just to be clear, this is a different methodology than they normally use. But they knew that lawmakers wanted updated numbers. But, so they had to create a new methodology because the normal data sources they used didn't match the same schedule. So I say that it's not necessarily apples to apples. But under this new, what they call two-sector forecast, which attempts to adjust or account for what they call federal uncertainty. So this is really sort of tariff policy, the reduction in force that we've seen at federal agencies, all of the changes that we've seen with federal government, and what that could mean for the state budget and state revenue. So with that, they have adjusted that projection from $615 million down to $303 million. So that means they have less money to play with, and they've also sort of frankly cautioned the legislature that this is just the, this is just the uncertainty number, and that they estimate that if the country were to hit a recession between now and '27, that the shortfall could rapidly rise to $1.8 billion in FY27. So typically, what you see is lawmakers waiting for this April FAC meeting because they usually get rosier numbers. And what we have seen is we've actually gotten, I don't know if the opposite of rosy is, we've gotten darker, bleaker numbers. So we haven't heard yet what that means for either side, you know, the governor's office or the legislature in terms of negotiations. But certainly, they don't have the, you know, breathing room that maybe they thought they were going into, going into May. So that's where we are with the budget. I think, again, the good news, the good news, the silver lining is, you know, and Tom can step in, we've heard no conversations about touching shared revenue, touching HERF, touching any of the revenue streams that we rely on. So, so I guess that's the one comfort we can take from the budget outlook for now. Now, there's just four bills I wanted to bring you guys up to speed on. A lot of the bills going through the legislature have been resolved one way or the other at this point. There's four that, you know, again, I think could be a particular impact for the tri-cities. So two bills, one of them is House Bill 2221. That is the anti-defund-the-police bill. That passed out of the Senate third read yesterday. And so I believe that was amended, so it does need to go back to the House for a final vote. So there's still one more vote there. I think the good news is that not only, you know, it passed with 16 votes, not 17, so it doesn't, it's not getting out clean. I would just share frankly that we at the League are very frustrated. Make no mistake, at the end of the day, we think this bill is unnecessary. Every evidence we've seen is that cities and towns continue to spend more on public safety year after year. And then frankly, the proportion or percentage that public safety makes up of your budgets is increasing as well. So we've seen no evidence of cities and towns trying to defund police. But recognizing that this is a perennial issue, and frankly, from some intel we received telling us that this might be the year to make a deal, we explored amendment options that would make the bill palatable. In other words, recognizing that there are very legitimate reasons why you would, quote unquote, "defund" police, as in your budget from one year might be lower than the budget from the period previous year. And some of those are very obvious, right? You had a one-time grant that went away. You paid down your pension liability. You had capital costs for public safety, but then the project was completed, right? And all those things are falling off the budget, which are reducing your public safety budget. But there are legitimate reasons as to why that would happen and not out of some concerted effort to weaken or defund your police department. We tried to offer those up in the spirit of good faith and having a conversation. And frankly, in the Senate in particular, there was a lawmaker who frankly decided to go, I'd argue, the opposite way, put in even more egregious language, arguably trying to state that our, I should say, your local police department and their operation is a matter of statewide concern. And, you know, cynically, our reaction is, well, then legislature, why don't you just run all of our police departments? If you think it's so important, why don't you try to do that? So the bill frankly was made worse. We now have opposition from the Fraternal Order of Police. We're trying to get official opposition from the Chiefs of Police. There's another union that has now opposed in addition to FOP. And so we frankly expect the bill to pass, but with some of the fact that it was amended to make it even more offensive, and the fact that we're getting more groups opposed, I personally am feeling a little bit stronger about our chances of a veto on this one. But that is one that is obviously concerned because it's trying to fix a problem that doesn't exist. Another bill that I wanted to mention, and it gets confusing, so that was 2221. Now I want to talk about House Bill 2222, just the next bill over. Also passed out yesterday, out of the Senate, going back to the House for a final vote. And this is a repeat. Some of you may remember, there was a bill last year, House Bill 2275, that basically gave the legislature veto authority over certain settlement agreements entered into by a city. And so 2222 says that for cities, towns, counties, I believe, school districts, and executive agencies, and the Attorney General, if I'm not mistaken, certain settlement agreements, I believe, over $1 million in value, and then certain contracts have to be sent to the legislature for review. And then potential, the legislature would then be authorized to make recommendations on changes to those agreements. So this is a problem in a number of ways. You know, one is, you know, there are efforts to try to make government more efficient. This is the exact opposite, right? The legislature, I think, does not have any sense of the scale of the workload this would invite. And to think that they could review these contracts in a timely manner and not somehow slow down the wheels of government, I think, is erroneous. That's ignoring the conflict of separation of powers at play here when talking about city authority, talking about Attorney General authority, the ability for them to try to come in and, I guess, second guess or review those agreements. And then there's the other piece, which is, at the end of the day, this bill is born, in our opinion, out of a false premise. The arguments we've heard is that cities and towns shouldn't be settling and that, you know, officers, employees are being robbed of their game court. The reality is, and as mayors, you guys go into the executive sessions where you have to deal with these settlement agreements, and you know that, I think all of you are in our municipal risk pool, there's a lot of deliberation that goes into these discussions. And, you know, you settle when you need to, right? When there's some factor in play that just doesn't, it's not worth the risk to the city and the taxpayers to take it to trial, and so you go to settle. And, and so, again, this isn't the role for the legislature. This is a role for you as the elected body to make those decisions regarding claims and litigation. And so we've opposed it. We've been able to maintain the Democrats in their opposition. We think a lot of that is not just due to us, but also the concern about interfering in executive and Attorney General authority. So that one, again, is one more vote away from going to the governor's office. She did veto it last year. We're hopeful that she'll veto it again this year. We haven't done, we haven't looked to see, but I imagine many of the groups I mentioned, the other local government groups, we suspect they'll be sending in veto requests as well. Again, because it is a pretty big infringement on your ability to decide how you want to handle lawsuits against your jurisdiction. Just two more to mention. These two are ballot measures or would-be ballot measures if passed. One of them is SCR 1008. I believe I might have mentioned this one when I presented in person at the last Tri-City Council. This is the one that is, in essence, trying to be Prop 108 for local governments. This is the one that says, cities, towns, and counties, if you're going to raise or impose any tax fee or assessment, it must be by a supermajority. Big, big difference. They like to say, hey, we live under it, you should too. But the reality is, the Prop 108 for the legislature does not apply to fees and really doesn't apply to assessments. So, you know, a lot of agencies will increase their fees, sometimes for inflation, sometimes due to the increased cost for processing, and that does not go to the legislature for a vote. But what this would say for you guys is, as we read it, is very simple, but listening to the sponsor, he seems to want the broadest interpretation. So if you have a senior center and, you know, you want to rent it, or your library, and to rent a DVD from the library is $3, and you want to increase it to $4, that now needs a supermajority vote. Your Parks and Rec Ramada fee is now going to require a two-thirds vote. It takes a lot of these items and now makes them legislative items that require the supermajority vote, which is something the legislature is not subject to. The other piece here is the cities and towns often operate differently than the state. I'm not sure for the tri-cities, but if you're running a utility and you run that utility as an enterprise fund, right? In theory, you are setting those rates to run the company. And if you have a council, if there's a council in Arizona where maybe people, you know, are just, maybe they view a rate as a tax or for whatever reason they're opposed to it, well, now the city general fund is going to have to subsidize that utility rate if you, as a council, aren't able to get the supermajority to get those utilities to run as a true enterprise fund. And so again, it's not recognized in the way that local government operates that is different from the way the state operates. That one would go to the voters for ultimate. that one would go to the voters for ultimate approval. Um, it seems to have been stalled in the legislature, so it seems to be stuck in the House. Uh, now we have been coordinating with CSA, so we've been working with the counties and we've kind of had a coordinative effort with, um, we've been pairing up supervisors with mayors to, to do some targeted outreach on what, who we think are gettable lawmakers. I've also heard that, as you guys may be aware, there was a lot, not a lot, there was some consternation after last year's election that so many of the legislative referrals died on the ballot. And there's a number of Republicans who supported those measures who believe that that was due to too many items being on the ballot. So I know I have heard some people talk about maybe we need to be more judicious about what it is we are sending to the ballot in twenty-six. So I hope that's the case, but that bill is still out there and that would arguably, um, take away from your, your local, uh, authority. And then just the last one is SCR ten fourteen. Uh, we call this one Tabor. Uh, it's weird that no one else really has, but this, but to us, it is very reminiscent of what Colorado has with their table bill, uh, which is the taxpayer bill of rights. That's where they get table from. Uh, so what SCR ten fourteen would do is create a formula in statute. And so basically, if there's ever a, um, budget surplus, the, of a certain amount, the formula triggers and says, okay, so half of that can, can get held, the other half basically has to be used to fund um, a reduction in tax rates. So not a one-time rebate, it's a reduction in tax rates. Um, so that's the sort of the, the taxpayer bill of rights. The problem with that is I think kind of twofold. One, it's the direct impact in that we benefit from urban revenue sharing. We get eighteen percent of total income tax collections. So you could hit this threshold and it could trigger, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the, the the reduction in rates would be in state income tax and state sales tax. Right? Well, we get shared revenue from both of those sources. And so then they'd be reducing our budgets, even if maybe we at the local level haven't experienced a budget surplus. Right? So there's a direct impact. Then you have the indirect impact in that there is no, um, there's no contemplation. It contemplates what you do with the budget surplus. It doesn't contemplate what you do in a budget shortfall. Right? And so what if through reducing these taxes, all of a sudden now you hit a budget shortfall? There's no mechanism to ratchet tax rates back up to recover the revenue. And what do we know? And this is Renee's, this is Renee's theory that I always put out there. What are the state's piggy banks? Frankly, if we're being honest, it's the counties, HRF, cities directly, rainy day. Right? Rainy Day Fund is fourth. Their own piggy bank is fourth. And, uh, I saw, uh, some supervisors in the room and they probably know, and I'm saying this as a city guy. I'm freely acknowledging counties are the first piggy bank they go after. Right? And so that's our issue of the indirect, indirect impact. If you're constantly, if you can only ratchet rates down and you now have to face Prop one oh eight to raise rates, are they going to do that or are they going to turn to their piggy banks? Our fear is that they'll turn to the piggy banks and they'll start taking our revenue to backfill their budget holes. That's the problem. Third problem I would just make is that, uh, the problem is that if approved by the voters, the last budget is the, is the baseline. And respectfully, I would contend that, I don't know, I personally would not say that the state budget is a perfect budget. Right? They are talking about setting that in as a baseline. And I would just tell you, for example, if I had to talk about city and town issues, I would say there's plenty of cities and towns who would like to see more money for water, for water resources, water infrastructure. I would argue that HRF is not doing its job. Under statute, HRF is supposed to be your revenue source for your street construction and maintenance. But I know every city and town is subsidizing that. And so it's hard to say that this is a great budget when you're not meeting all of your statutory obligations. And on top of that, let's talk about the fact that there are a number of cost shifts currently on the books to the counties. So there's current, what I would call budget gimmicks currently in place, and yet they would set that and say, oh yeah, that's our ideal budget. So again, a lot of financial implications to that one if it were to pass and then get, um, enacted by the voters. And so we are, uh, opposed to all four of those measures I mentioned. Um, SCR ten fourteen, that's the last one I just talked about, the Tabor bill. That one also seems to be stuck. And so again, we haven't heard, because it was moving, so I suspect there is some deliberation about what it is they want to send to the ballot next year. Um, and you know, we'll, a win is a win, so we'll take it anyway, any way we can get it. Um, with that, mayors, uh, you've been more than gracious with your time. I just went through a lot. But, uh, Tom and I are happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for the update. With SCR ten fourteen, is that, uh, stuck in the House right now?
Correct. Yep. Uh, let me just double check. So it is.
It's in rules.
Yep. So it hasn't even gone through rules. So it really is, so it's either parked, as they say, or there's some behind the scenes machination.
Okay. Yeah, perfect. And then just a real life example right here in our own community for, uh, twenty-two, twenty-one is our, like Havasu City Police Department operates our animal control. And so if we for some reason, uh, wanted to create an animal control department separate from the police department or create a partnership with our humane society, that would not be allowed should this bill pass. I mean, that's, that's not, eh, the monies would be moving from our police budget into a newly created animal control department or to a partnership with the humane society. Uh, and it's not taking monies away, but it would be in consideration if this bill was to pass. So sometimes it's good just to get a local perspective of how this really would happen and what the impacts would be. So, uh, mayors, do you have any questions for the league? All right. Thank you so much, uh, Tom and Ray for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And I thank you for that example, because that's exactly what we were thinking of. That that's a legitimate example that we tried to offer up, an amendment to account for that that was ultimately rejected. So it's nice to hear, well, unfortunate that there could be negative consequences, but it's, it's good to hear, like you said, real world example. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is item seven, our Arizona Department of Transportation update. Uh, Mr. Steinberger.
Uh, good morning, council. Here's some of our current, uh, construction projects. Uh, we have the system-to-system interchange out here at the West Kingman TI. As you've seen, a lot of progress moving on, uh, got some traffic congestion going on, but when this project gets completed in a couple of years, you're going to see a big improvement in the area. Uh, we have, still have the East Kingman TI westbound bridge deck replacement. Uh, that's slated to get done, uh, early June this year. Out, uh, east of Kingman is the Rancho Santa Fe TI, what it was named originally. Um, currently, we're working on getting the detours in place and expanding, uh, the westbound bridge, working on the substructure on that and doing some grading for uh, Rancho Santa Fe Boulevard, uh, then running through Kingman all the way to the California border from Flagstaff. We have a Brad, uh, broadband project that's being administered by our North Central District out of Flagstaff. And then down in the Havasu area, we have our safety project, the Cinerase median from, uh, South Pallaverty to Price Road. Uh, bids opened, uh, earlier this month. Anticipating that being awarded in May and starting construction this summer. Uh, some additional projects, we have down heading to Phoenix, uh, just about ten miles south of I forty on ninety-three, the Kane Springs. That's the last segment of the four lane divided between, uh, Wiki Up and I forty. Uh, that should be completed in about a year, a year and a half. And then, uh, near the California border, we have our two pavement preservation projects. Uh, the California border to Needle Mountain TI. That's just started, working on some guardrail work and, uh, getting everything started to do the paving on that project. Uh, looking for about another year for that one. And then for the I forty Needle Mountain Road TI to where you turn off to go to Havasu to ninety-five, uh, wrapping that project up, uh, just completed the paving. And then south of Wiki Up, we have the, um, pavement preservation, uh, project that goes to nothing. That's just kicked off. Uh, we're looking for about another year and a half on that project. Here's some, uh, pictures of some of the West Kingman TI work. Uh, th- this is the girders for the widening of the bridge at Clacks Canyon. Here's some of the work at Holy Moses Wash and the, the flyover ramp that will be tying into US ninety-three. Here's some additional work. I got a couple of pictures here of the work of where the ramp will, uh, come off at White Close Road, the bridge and the expansion. Then on the far right picture, uh, one of the, the columns that goes over the flyover at, uh, Clacks Canyon Road and the bridge. And then here's a couple of other pictures. Uh, the one on the left is at Clacks Canyon Road. Piers. And then on the right is an overview of coming off of US ninety-three and what it's looking like for Holy Moses Wash and how it's going to come over, uh, Fort Bill Road. Here's some of the work that's going on at the East Kingman TI, uh, deck replacement, uh, deck pore. Uh, here's some of the work out at Rancho Santa Fe TI, uh, the Gerder and Pier expansions for the westbound bridge. And then here's some of the grading for the drainage channels and the detours. And then here's, uh, some of the paving work that was done at the Needle Mountain TI and Lake Havasu TI. And here's, uh, some of the box extensions and grading work going on down at US ninety-three, uh, Kane Springs. Now, uh, some of the upcoming, uh, pavement preservation projects, uh, just east of the TI for US ninety-three, heading down to Wiki Up onto I forty, uh, going all the way to Silver Springs Road. We have the pavement preservation project. It's approximately seventeen million. Uh, it's a fiscal year twenty-seven, fourth quarter project. Uh, heading down south of Wiki Up, we have Placerita Creek to Date Creek. Um, that's about ten miles south of Wiki Up. That's another pavement preservation project, fiscal year twenty-seven, fourth quarter, approximately forty-four million dollars. Then the, uh, pavement preservation project, that project is advertised. We're getting ready to award that one. Have the partnering next week. And it will be, uh, starting up this summer. It will be going from Holy Moses Wash all the way out to uh, Rancho Santa Fe TI. And then US ninety-three, just here in Kingman, going all the way out just south of, uh, the turnoff going to Dolan Springs. We've got that one to be a fiscal year twenty-seven project, but in the tentative program, we're pushing that up to be a first quarter, uh, twenty-six project, uh, hundred and eight million press, um, mi- approximately million dollar project. And that segment of US ninety-three is definitely in need of that. Some of our upcoming, uh, modernization projects to improve safety on some of our corridors and everything, um, out near the Bonanza Signal on US ninety-three, uh, going from about the, where the TA truck stop is to Bonanza, we're looking at some indirect lifts and improving those, uh, intersections. Uh, we're looking, getting ready to advertise that project at the end of this fiscal year. Um, down on US ninety-three in the, the two-lane section, um, going from San Maria into Wickenburg. We're looking at doing a pa- uh, couple of passing lanes from milepost one seventy-five to one seventy-seven. Of course, that's a couple of years out fiscal year twenty-seven. And then down in the Lake Havasu area, it's a local project. Um, I know the city is looking at doing some beacon and some safety improvements on some of their local roads. That's a fiscal year twenty-six. Approximately two hundred thousand dollar safety project. And then, uh, some of the expansion projects and larger projects in the district coming up, uh, currently under design. We have the Big Jim Wash. That'll be a four-lane divided, picking up head south of Wiki Up, heading to Wickenburg, uh, south from San Maria, another about three-mile segment. Um, it's a hundred and ten million dollar project slated to start construction in fiscal year twenty-six. Uh, we also have the Vista Royale. That's just north of Wickenburg. It is a four-lane divided project for, um, to tie in from where it's divided all the way up to the junction of SR seventy-one and where the gap projects are leaving off. We also have the funding for the gap project. Don't have a schedule on that. That's going to improve that intersection at US ninety-three and eighty-nine. Uh, north of Wickenburg. And then, uh, here in Kingman, uh, working with the city of Kingman on the I forty, Kingman Crossing, traffic interchange. Uh, still working on that project. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Steinberger. Uh, lots of, uh, projects going on. So thank you, uh, for the update. And uh, on behalf of Lake Havasu City, thank you for the contract, uh, with the highway cleanup that is going on. It's making a great improvement in our area. So we appreciate that. Uh, mayors, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Todd, not to put you on the hot spot, but first we appreciate all that's happening here in Kingman, uh, with the different TIs and improvements that are going on. But we get calls every week about the section of highway basically from the port of entry going north to Las Vegas on Highway ninety-three, up to around the fifty-mile marker. The highway is horrible. Uh, any ideas as far as pavement preservation or re, you know, fixing that road?
Uh, I kind of briefly touched on it. It's that, uh, what we're calling Sanctuary Road to I forty.
Okay.
It's, uh, was originally in the program for a fiscal year twenty-seven, uh, project. Uh, we're bumping it up a year and we're anticipating to advertise it July of this year for construction. And currently, uh, we, we realize the issues with it. Uh, we're maintaining it all the time, doing temporary maintenance overlays, which don't hold together for very long, but we're doing the best we can to hold that whole segment together. So with that pavement preservation project coming up from the turnoff there at Pierce Ferry Road to I forty and then all the maintenance work we're doing, uh, you should see a reduction in that. And also a reminder, make sure to just, anybody that calls in complaints to, you know, shift them over to us.
Push them your way.
Yeah, we'll, we'll address it.
What mile marker is Sanctuary Road?
It is approximately milepost, uh, forty-eight.
Okay.
But you, you're looking at about twenty-five miles.
Okay.
North of Kingman.
That'll be a great improvement. Thanks, Todd.
Thank you. Mr. Knutson, do you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. Uh, thanks, Todd, for all you're doing. A very, very first slide, you had the raised median project in, in Havasu on, uh, on ninety-five from South Pallaverty north. Do you know the, the timing of that or what that, is that upper contract? Is that being scoped or?
No, no, it's, it's actually been advertised. The bids have been opened and like I said, it, um, we're anticipating to start late this summer, early fall.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Steinberger. Uh, next is item eight, our rural transportation update. Mr. Adam.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members. And, uh, we'll go back to, uh, the state legislature and the discussion about the budget. I think that's, uh, the area that has the most, uh, potential impact as far as, uh, transportation is concerned. And, uh, the, uh, finance advisory committees meeting from a couple of weeks ago that Renee went over, uh, did, uh, suggest a far more cautious approach to the budget this year. Um, there were different forecast scenarios that they had to work with and in basically, uh, the two being primarily sticking with the previous forecast where there was, where it was anticipated that there was over six hundred million in one-time revenues that they would have to work with this year are taking the far more cautious approach to, uh, buffer against any future revenue declines as a result of, uh, uncertainties with the federal budget and tariffs. and tariffs, three-hundred million. Either way, that is a positive level when you compare that to last year, when there was a fairly substantial deficit that they had to work with. At that point, we were worried about rating state revenue sharing. We were concerned about clawbacks to funding that had previously been appropriated to transportation. And in fact, some of those clawbacks did occur last year. So the fact that we are at least projected to be in the black, I think, is a positive in that, as Renee indicated, we're not going to see any revenue sharing rates. I don't think we'll see any reductions to HERF or any funding clawback that was previously provided to transportation. So that's the positive. If they decide to go with the more cautious approach and in budget with one-time revenues at the three-hundred million level, that's clearly going to lower what they're able to provide for transportation. And, and I guess before I go into that, I should also say that we're also not anticipating there to be any increase in the permanent revenue streams that feed into HERF or transportation. There's been some focus in the last couple of years on electric vehicles. In fact, last year, the, last year's chairman of the House Transportation Committee ran legislation that would have implemented an annual fee on electric vehicles with the amount being comparable to what a typical petroleum-fueled vehicle pays in fuel taxes over any given year. That bill did get thirty-five out of sixty votes in the House, which is really good, especially when you consider last year, the partisan divide in the House was thirty-one to twenty-nine. So any bill that gets thirty-five votes, that's pretty good. Unfortunately, it's not enough. You need a supermajority vote to increase revenues and we needed forty. So it had that simple majority, but did not meet that supermajority threshold. This year, your own Leo Biassucci took over the Transportation Committee. And he has also had some interest in electric vehicles and seen ways to make sure that they are paying their fair share for use of the infrastructure. And Leo turned his focus more away from the, the individual vehicles to making sure that any tax revenue generated at the electric vehicle charging stations was being dedicated to transportation. In other words, going to HERF rather than the state general fund. And so legislation was introduced. There were hearings. I think he's, he basically, that bill has been amended to have to address another topic. So I think he's still addressing the issue. I think he's asked A D O T and I think the Department of Revenue to come back with some information on just exactly how the charging stations are taxed and where that revenue was going. I, so again, I don't anticipate that anything will be enacted this year, but there'll be some additional research that will go on off-session with the hopes that Representative Biassucci will come back with something more concrete to introduce next year. So with that said, I think we basically are, once again, we've got one-time revenues as really the only potential to increase transportation revenues. As has been the case over the last roughly five years, when there have been revenues available, we've been successful in having transportation prioritized. And I think there's a very strong possibility that that will occur once again. Typically, what happens is a relatively small level of revenue will get divided amongst the legislators and leadership gives them the ability to direct where their individual allocation is directed in the budget. And that's where we've had the most success as far as seeing specific projects receive funding. With the smaller levels, I think that that may be the process that they go through again this year, but we're talking much, much smaller amounts. I heard that one million was the potential amount that each legislator may have. And so if one million doesn't get, get you what you needed as far as what was in the R-TAC priority project legislation or what you've been engaged with your legislators as far as pursuing, something to keep in the back of your minds that they might not be able to fund that six-million-dollar project for you this year. But if you have something that's in that million-dollar range, they might be able to insert that into the budget for you. So again, something to keep in mind. So we're continuing at the R-TAC level to make sure that as much available revenues goes to infrastructure as possible. In addition to the individual priority projects, another area that we are looking at is the Arizona Smart Fund, which was a state program that was established almost three years ago. And it basically provides funding, state funding, to rural communities, which they can use to help prepare and pursue going after competitive federal transportation grants. It can be used to hire a consultant to bring your project up to federal aid standards, which is a requirement before you use any federal funding. And it can also be used to satisfy any local match requirement, which may come with the federal grant. Those can be sometimes as much as twenty percent of the project cost. So having that state assistance, I think, has been very helpful to many communities. And so this has been a very successful program. To date, roughly sixty million in state awards have been provided. And so for those awarded projects, they have already gone out and have been able to generate almost a hundred and forty million in federal grants. But many of them have also not gone fully through the federal application process. So while they've already secured a hundred and forty million in federal funding, they have the potential to bring in another two-hundred and twenty million. So the rate of return has already been great. It could, and it could end up being substantially better. Unfortunately, the situation that we find ourselves in is the remaining balance for the Smart Fund is about fifteen million, one-five. So if we were to continue the, the award rates that, you know, that we've been doing over the last two years, we will have exhausted the Smart Fund balance in about five months. Because of the popularity and demand of the program and the level of federal funding that it's bringing back to Arizona that the state wouldn't otherwise be receiving, we would at a minimum like to see that program funded to where we can at least keep the same award rates going through the next state fiscal year. That would take about thirty-three million to do so. So that is the, although we think we can justify it being higher, thirty-three million is the ask that we've currently provided to the legislators and particularly our discussions with leadership. We, the governor and her budget proposal has a thirteen million appropriation for the Smart Fund. And then Representative Teresa Martinez, the vice chair of House Transportation, introduced a bill which would have provided, or which would provide ten million. So those numbers are lower than what we would like to see, but I do think it's significant and important to show that we do have bipartisan support for additional funding for the Smart Fund. So I think that, you know, our big ask is for as much available revenue as possible to be directed to transportation and for that to go to both rural projects as well as additional funding for the Smart Fund. And so thank you for your time and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Adam. Other questions from mayors? Thank you for joining us. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, our final item on the agenda is our mayors' reports with city updates. We'll start, Mayor Ream, are you still with us from Colorado City? Did you want to say hello and give an update?
Yes.
Hi, thank you for joining us this morning.
And yes, we are, we're doing well. We have a few, a few things to update. We are currently in the final stage of completion on our, on our airport taxiway. So we'll have our taxiways complete this year and within the next month, actually. That's the big thing we have. City budget-wise, we've, we are, you know, facing some of the same challenges, so we're trying to figure out how to make it work with less resources. But we have a few other projects. We have a couple of C D B G projects that have come to completion on Hilldale, on our Central Street and Hilldale Street. And super grateful for the help we've received there. Other than that, we don't have a lot of other things to really update about. And the, we've had some turnover in some of our departments, which always presents challenges trying to find qualified help. Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Ream. We appreciate again you being here and thanks for the update. Mayor Watkins, would you like to give an update for the city?
Sure, thank you, I appreciate that. Actually, a couple of different items I want to mention. The Needle City Manager and several council members from Needles visited our downtown streetscape as they gathered ideas on making improvements for their own downtown, which they're getting ready to do. And I wanted to give kudos to Councilwoman Staley, but she just left. But anyway, she led them on that tour and gave them some great ideas. We have several, we have a number of several new restaurants that are opening, that are scheduled to open here in twenty-twenty-five in Kingman. One is El Pollo Loco, which is, they're targeting an open day to Memorial Day weekend. So hopefully they'll get that all done in that building and be ready to serve people. Tropical Smoothie Cafe has a planned opening for Labor Day weekend. Bosa Donuts, do you guys have Bosa Donuts in your cities? I mean, I've heard of Bosa. I can't remember if I've ever had them. I probably have, I like donuts, so. Anyway, they're getting ready to open, but that probably won't be till November or December. And then we have a new W Z Asian Buffet that is trying to open third quarter of this year. So great place, more places to eat here in Kingman, more choices for our citizens. We have, of course, Todd already mentioned it, the progress on Rancho Santa Fe Parkway, which our citizens, and it now has been paid for also, the name change, we are going to change that to the Flying Fortress Parkway. Now, do any of you know what a flying fortress is? Some of you do. I know Sean does, Smiley does. Some of us older citizens might, but a flying fortress is another name for a B seventeen. As you remember, Kingman's industrial park and airport was a B seventeen bomber training base during World War Two. And so, and to honor that, that history, we're changing the name. And the citizens came up, we put it out to the vote for the citizens, and the name that was chosen was the Flying Fortress, so Flying Fortress Parkway. Now, of course, like anything else, when you do a change on a contract, it's an additional, I think this one's going to be around sixty-five hundred dollars, but there is a group of citizens that came forward to offer to pay for that. So, yeah, it's good stuff going on. Of course, Todd also mentioned the progress on the West Kingman T I going towards Las Vegas. Of course, that is causing its own problematic nightmares. As some of you might, maybe when you came into town, or you actually probably got off of Beale Street, so it wasn't so bad. But right now, I forty is narrowed down to one lane eastbound, and it is causing all kinds of traffic problems. And of course, as we all see in our cities, when there is this, when we try to make these improvements for traffic control, we also have to go through some headaches too. And so that's happening. So we appreciate our citizens' patience with that. Our Citizens Academy is in its final weeks. And up to date, we have had, of course, this happens in the spring and the fall. And up to date, we've had seventy-one citizens graduate. So that's a great thing and we appreciate those people wanting to participate. Something of fun, we have a zip line that our Parks Department has installed at the Centennial Park. And of course, as you know, Centennial Park is our flagship park, right off the freeway. And we have a new zip line, so that's a great thing. So we invite anybody who'd like to go have fun on that, if they're up here in Kingman. And then if it's all right, Mayor Sheehy, Sarah, it's Sarah, could you key that up? We have, we actually won first place. What, our tourism department put this together, didn't they, Sarah?
Yes, Adam Geller with our Office of Tourism, he used a Kling AI program and he took all of our old photographs and actually animated them.
Right, and so it's called a flash film festival. And I'm not sure, is this, Sarah, is this festival, was this the inaugural year for that here in Kingman?
No, it was the fifth year.
Okay, fifth year?
The fifth year, yes.
And this documentary, and it's what, about four minutes long?
Yeah, it's a little over four minutes.
If you're with your permission?
Absolutely.
We'd like to play it. And of course, what's amazing, it takes these old photographs and using with AI, it makes them almost in motion, puts them in motion. So it's pretty interesting. So, and Sarah, of course, and most of you know who Sarah Hall is, but she is our, from our marketing, she's our marketing and communications coordinator.
Mayor Watkins, if I may, I just wanted to let everybody know, we will be able to show it in chambers, but anybody on Zoom will need to either come back to this meeting recording on our website or they will need to go to YouTube directly. If we try to share it with the Zoom, it has a horrible lag, so we're not going to do that today.
Right, thank you for the reminder, Annie.
Yeah, so for those on virtually, it looks like Ms. Hall just went to YouTube dot com and searched Kingman, past, present and future. You'll be able to follow along and watch the video with us.
Always the cycles of past, present, reveal the future of that individual or society, which takes the effort to record and become cognizant of the historical voice of what is history, but in the record of man search for himself, only to realize in the end that death is but the beginning of another cycle. From the human cultures began the divergence that led to the development of the Mohavis and the Walapys, who today inhabit a surrounding area. Mid such as Citrees, Hook, Hives and Beal charted the area, giving their names to many of today's most famous landmarks. Beal gave his name to the springs, which were later to become the site of a military outpost and the beginning of what is today the city of Kingman. The development of the great mining industry begins as exploration reveals the great mineral wealth hidden in the rugged and abounding mountains. In eighteen eighty-two, the railroad reaches the valley between the Surban and the Walapai Mountains. And the town of Kingman is born. Meanwhile, rural Artoo gives the final blow to the mining industry. And the thriving communities of Chloride, Mineral Park, Canoe become ghost towns. In Mohave County, the story is one of fantastic growth, with population more than doubling since nineteen sixty. The old culture as we have known it has passed into oblivion, giving rise to our new generation. And while the technological level of development traversed by the new generation will be a far cry from that of the predecessors, they will, in effect, be only retracing steps in the patterns of growth as the seeds of life and death continue to expand. The pulsing cycle of history.
Thank you, Sarah, for your help on that. And as you can see, this documentary won first place in the Flash Film Festival, so pretty impressive, especially when you can take old pictures like that and actually sort of put them to life with AI. Incredible. So anyway, we have a great town, proud of our heritage, and of course, we are the oldest city in our county, so we take pride in that, too. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Watkins. We actually were commenting on the way in how great the downtown improvements are in the city of Kingman, so great work.
It's becoming, it is a lot of, a lot of good people. Of course, something that took, what, 40 years to get to put together, I think. I think that initially was started back in 1990, so 30 plus years.
Yeah, all good things take time.
It does.
It's looking good.
It does, thank you.
Thank you. I'm Mayor DeMiko.
That's a hard one to follow. We all have, we have a little friendly competition between the three of us always, and me and Kel already said we're conceding to Ken because that was, that was tough to beat, that was very great. I'm going to try to be very brief on anything, on everything, because I've got quite a few items here. First, we just had the ribbon cutting recently for our senior center addition. We had a multimillion dollar project for Activity Center for the seniors, state-of-the-art Activity Center is now open and being enjoyed by our local seniors. We just installed three right-hand turn lanes on Highway 95. Back in, year before last, we went after, myself and Travis went and lobbied for right-hand turn lane money with our state legislators. We were awarded 9 million. That money was swept, so we went back the following year and went after it again, and we did, we were awarded 8 million. And that 8 million was sitting in ADOT Fund. When we took the, did the takeback of Highway 95 with ADOT, that 8 million was awarded to us directly to use. And since then, we've already started with three right-hand turn lanes. And we're under construction for another one right now. The three, first three were only 480,000. The new one that we're doing right now is a little bigger, it's going to be about 460,000. And then we're moving on to the front of Safeway, about a $2 million project, but all those will hopefully be completed in the next year or so, and which very needed to alleviate traffic on Highway 95, our north-south corridors. All we have going through our city is Highway 95 and the Parkway at this time, so that was very needed, and we thank our, our state legislators for working with us with that. We just got our state-of-the-art splash pad back into operation. Luckily, it was under warranty. The biggest, biggest attraction of that, the big bowl that puts water on the kids broke, we got that back up. We're almost completed with our ADA access to the river, so our handicapped people in wheelchairs can enjoy the river now, too. There'll be access down there with a cage that keeps them protected because the river flows pretty good. That's almost completed. We've got a multimillion dollar project going on with our new animal shelter, and we're hoping that will be open and operational by January 1st. For those of you who don't know, that's the old Mojave Valley Daily News Newspaper Company, so very big state-of-the-art animal shelter. We have our summer camp getting ready to fire up at the fieldhouse with activities, pretty much everything you could think of, from, from sports camps to cooking to any, anything you could think of, which will continue through the summer. We just had the ribbon cutting and for Optimum Community Center, which is the old, old Bullhead, it was the old elementary school, we cut a deal with the city, with the school district, and took that over, and we put about 5 million into it. We have a state art facility there, and we have rooms for our nonprofits to use at no cost. We just had the ribbon cutting for our new pavilion amphitheater at Gary Keith Park, which we create for, for the arts in our city and activities. That was another partnership with our community, about three, actually, the county was involved in that, too, helping. Great, great partnership between the city, the county and our local community. That's going to be another great addition. We just sent our staff to, all of our staff, actually, all of our employees to customer service training with the college, and then we sent our city staff to, to leadership training with the college, which will be going on for approximately one year for that, to help us better serve our customers and our constituents and give them better customer service. We just had the Mayhem Bike Run in Bullhead City. Since Laughlin River Run is not around anymore, it's been going on for, I believe this is the fourth, fifth year now, and we kicked that off with the Mayor's Run. I got to get my new Harley out there and lead 200 bikes behind me, and we rode around town and, and kicked off the run. Every restaurant in town was jam-packed, so that's going to bring great revenue to the city. They're kicking off with our Merrill Project. They got new pads, we're going to have two hotels on the river. I believe they're going to be Marriott brand hotels, and across the street, we're going to have a state, new state-of-the-art gas station and some new restaurants there. So the, the flats have been put out and that's starting in, under construction, hopefully will be done within a year, maybe a year and a half. On the eighth, we're having our budget session, but we will be breaking to go do ribbon cutting for our new affordable housing project, the Abbott Housing Project, Affordable Homes, not to be confused with Section 8. 66 new units down at the end of, of, down at the end of Clearwater, sorry, Clearwater. That'll help, I think all, all three of our communities need affordable housing, so that's a good start. Where we finally as in our budget on our budget, our balanced budget, starting our workshop here coming up real soon. May 15th and 16th, 16th, we're hosting the Transportation Board in Bullhead City, they'll be having their meeting in Bullhead City. And May 15th, we're welcoming them with a welcome dinner on the celebration boat over in, in Laughlin for a dinner. Anybody's welcome to come to both. I recommend that you come to the Transportation Board meeting and if you have issues or get educated on what's going on with our state transportation. We just recently had a state auction here in the county, and two, one big lot was bought across the street from the river from Matt Laughlin, which will be developed in the near future, which is well needed. The other auction got postponed, I believe they moved that to June 17th, right around that area, and that's a big one, that's where S3 Group will be coming out and whoever bids, but that, that auction really depends on our Emerald Bay project that's set to start off by the new bridge, multimillion dollar project with the Jack Nicklaus Golf Course. And then we just completed our, the lane of the concrete for RC Oval Trek in, in Rotary Park, which goes along with the rest of our RC Park there. And that's it for, for me. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor DeMiko. Great work going on in Bullhead City as well. And Lake Havasu, we have a lot of roadwork, so if you've come to visit us, thank you for your patience. It's all in the city core areas that we're doing that. It, as Mayor Watkins alluded to earlier, it's, it's a mess when it's happening, but afterwards, our citizens are very, very happy. It's a great smooth ride, and we're really glad that we're able to invest that kind of money into our infrastructure. This past weekend, we hosted Desert Storm, we had record crowds on our street party. We had great folks throughout the weekend. You may have seen in the media, there was a pretty dramatic boat crash that occurred. Fortunately, the occupants were just minor injuries, so very, very fortunate for that. But that's such a fantastic event every year, and we're so glad that those folks continue to choose Lake Havasu City for that event. Since the last time we met, we have refinanced our sewer debt in Lake Havasu City, not the term, just we wanted to get a lower interest rate. So same term, the rates went down. It'll save our utility fund about 1.2 million dollars a year from that refund, which is fantastic. We'll be able to invest those monies into additional infrastructure within that fund. Also for Desert Storm, we opened Main Street Commons, which is the new name of the Downtown Catalyst, is what we'd called it for, for the last eight years. But we had a naming contest with our citizens. The new name is Main Street Commons, it's right in the center of our downtown area on Crario and McCollack. It's a really fantastic downtown gathering space that will be used for events, for park-like activities or amenities for our citizens. And then also, it's just a really great place for our community to gather. So really excited to move our First Fridays to that area, as well as other events that we have in the downtown area. This month in May, we'll be celebrating our 30th anniversary of our Aquatic Center. So our Aquatic Center is 30 years old, surprising that it's been that long because it's such a used amenity within our community. Last year, we had over 65,000 people attend open swim in our Aquatic Center. So it's a really popular facility. We'll be doing an event this coming weekend to commemorate that. So if you want to come on down, there'll be free swim provided by the Elks Club and a lot of exciting things happening as part of that. We have a few larger developments that we are working on. One is known as the Waterfront. This is the result of a state trust land auction from last year. It's approximately 90 acres on the island of Lake Havasu, which was formerly a golf course. They have had two community meetings, and so they're generally known as neighborhood meetings, but they opened up to the entire community just because of the impact of that development, and they are getting some great feedback. It's a mixed-use development that will include some retail, some public amenities, a boat launch facility, resort hotel, as well as different housing products within that development. We would anticipate that coming before our Planning and Zoning Commission, maybe the summer or early fall. If not sooner, I know that they're very anxious to get going, and we're ready to be able to hear those. And after Planning and Zoning, it'll obviously come to the council for discussion and the opportunity for approval. And then just this last week, we also had an auction that was, occurred here as the state trust land, and 630 acres were purchased for 10.3 million dollars near Home Depot, that area of our community on the northern, northern end of our community. It happens to be in the county, but folks don't always know that when they're coming into Lake Havasu, there's little pockets there on the north end that are county, and you know, city runs right adjacent to it. So it's county, they'll have to go through the county approval process for anything that they want to do with that, but that is something that is going to impact our region. So those are the updates that I have for Lake Havasu City. Is there anything else that the mayors would like to bring forth? All right, final item is adjournment. So before we adjourn, there is going to be lunch served hosted by the city of Kingman. Thank you so much to the city of Kingman. It'll be in the back of the room and it is ready, so please stay, feel free and enjoy lunch. Thank you to the city of Kingman for hosting us today. And thank you all for attending and engaging with us either in person or virtually. We are adjourned, and we'll see you next time. Thank you.